Yeah, just wanted to start off with the framework of why this is important. U.S. Census data in 2020, our population was 28,100. It's estimated in 2021, it's 29,563. That's a 5.5% increase. Over the past nine years, we have CEO'd just under 3,100 homes. That's an average of 345 a year. So as you can see, the county is growing. Concerns have been raised, so we wanted to look at ways to, you know, help have responsible growth for the county. And that's where this comes in, the 40,000 square foot lot. So the way this presentation, I've set it up, first want to build a framework, really look at lot size and how density plays a role in that, what role our land use plan and UDO have in that. Then we'll look at the actual text amendment that is proposed, see what that looks like, what other things we might consider, and then just end by looking at the open space and then talking a little bit about strategies, you know, other than lot size that could be considered to curb density. So the way this works, I'm going to go through the presentation. Feel free to ask any questions along the way, take the conversation wherever we need to go.
Great.
And gonna get started.
Thank you.
So first, development density. Not saying anything you don't already know, but density is the maximum number of residential dwelling units permitted per acre of land. So it's density units divided by acre. Implementing density, there's two tools that we use to do that. One is the land use plan, and that determines the development patterns. The other is the UDO, and that sets up the regulations that allow certain densities to be put in place. Density is determined using gross acreage. When we talk about gross acreage, it's the total area of the land. Just want to note that 404 wetlands are included in this, but the KAMA designated wetlands are not. And lot size, open space, and infrastructure all influence the gross density.
Kevin, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Just to, that's as it exists today.
This is as it exists today.
Okay.
Yeah, this first part, as I said, the framework, it's all going to be what we've got in place, so you get an idea of that to then see, you know, where we want to move forward. Just wanted to talk briefly about the role of Imagine Currituck. As you know, every piece of land in the county is given a land use designation. We call it a transect method. This table here, you have it in front of you, it has a lot of data on it, but this is the designation for each subarea in the county. It shows the density and it also lists the percentage of land included in that. So for O2 reserve lands, this is the highest amount of land in the county, 35% is in this designation. The density for that is one dwelling unit for every three acres. G1, low density, which is where a majority of the single-family dwellings are located in, this accounts for 32% of the land area, and the density is up to one dwelling unit per acre. In G2, and this is mostly along the major arterials, it counts for 7% of the land area and is up to two acre dwelling units per acre. I wanted to focus on the up to, because it doesn't guarantee you that you have two dwelling units per acre. It's just, you can have up to two and be consistent with the comprehensive plan, but there's other, you know, factors that play into that. Lastly, we have the medium to high density designations, the G3, which only accounts for 4% of the land. Most of it is up to two dwelling units per acre. However, there are areas such as Moyoc, which are 12 dwelling units per acre, Grandy, which is six to 10, and four in Point Harbor. I will note that this is, that density is dependent upon having a master plan and the availability of sewer. Yes, sir.
Give me the definition of a half. You got one and a half up there? What about a half?
Half dwelling? It just, it, one and a half dwelling units per acre. It's just what you get if you multiply it out over the whole scope of the land.
It's just the number that's probably.
It's just a number. It bases on the, taking the whole land area and dividing it by dwelling units. You're not putting a dwelling and a half on each, each lot.
Kevin, is, University Plaza on the south end, is that G3 or G4?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. Donna can look that up and get you an answer on that.
Okay, I was just curious.
Lastly, G4, and these are the Village Centers. These account for less than 1% of the land area, and that is up to two dwelling units an acre contingent on a master plan and sewer, and that's up to four in Grandy.
That's a G3.
I think it is still.
The office park is a G4, right? At the Village Center.
That would, that would be my guess, because it does have that additional density, and there are very few G4 designations in the county.
Most of them are in Corolla, correct?
Yes, there are some in Corolla. And then just showing there at the bottom of the slide are some images of kind of a typical dwelling we would expect to see in each of those land use designations. Next, let's talk a little bit about zoning districts and lot sizes. Here is another chart, and this lists the lot size and densities for every zoning district, just focusing on the residential zoning districts, as that's what this text amendment focuses on. So it also lists the percentage of the county in that particular zoning district. So ag is by far the most of any, it's 60% of land is zoned ag. In a traditional development, and there are two kinds of developments, there's traditional development and a conservation subdivision. Most of the larger subdivisions you see come before you are the conservation subdivision type of development. But in traditional, with county water, it is a, already a 40,000 square foot lot minimum. It's three acres without county water. This is where the lots get a little smaller. With the conservation subdivision, it is 30,000 square feet per lot, two acres without county water. In the single-family zoning district, SFM.
So hang on one second.
Yes, sir.
So when you're talking about ag, and we're talking about three drawing units per acre, there is a thought process behind that, right? There's a reasoning to do smaller lots in a conservation. I wonder if you might touch on what that is and why we would do that.
Yes, absolutely. And actually, well, I'll jump ahead a couple slides and come back.
You got that, you got that coming in the future?
Yeah, but we can talk about it now, because this is traditional versus conservation. I put this slide up there showing two plans, and this is the same development. These are plans for River's Edge, and the plan on the left there, the yield plan, that is a plan showing if you used 40,000 square foot lots and use a traditional form of development, at least that was in place when this was developed, the 142.81 acres using 10% open space yields 122 lots. And that site plan there gives you a feel for what that, you know, the density looks like. The bottom plan is the plan that they went with, and that was recorded with Final Platte. With the 143 acres in that, it used 54% open space, and the lot sizes, the minimum was just under 16,000 square feet up to 31,000. And that actually yielded more lots, 128. So the density was more, the, had more lots, but if you, you know, no River's Edge and look at it, it has much more open feel. And that's really what conservation subdivision is about. It's about providing these larger portions of open space to then group the homes together, giving a little more density but a more open feel.
If I may, we adopted Conservation Service Conservation Districts to prevent rural sprawl, and that's what the top left one shows. That's a house on every acre. And we went with the conservation, and we ended up with River's Edge, which is probably the best example you could have of conservation subdivision.
Right, staff agreed, which is why we use this, this site plan in this slide.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So just continuing on, in the SFM mainland, the traditional development, 40,000 square foot minimum, in the conservation is where it drops to 25,000 square feet. Also, let me just mention on this slide, the things highlighted in red are what would change with this proposed text amendment. SFI, SFR, and SFO, in those districts, you know, Knott's Island, Offroad, and Corolla, those are either already 40,000 square foot or more minimum, or, you know, the beach were not involved with this text amendment. And lastly, the MXR, which counts for .15% of all zoning districts, the single-family lot minimum is 15,000 square feet. This chart also shows the densities permitted and the open space. I just will note that no density permitted is more than one dwelling unit per acre. Just wanted to talk real briefly about rural character, because there has been a lot of development in the northern part of the county, but, you know, I know that Currituck County is still proud of its rural heritage. So then a question comes, you know, how do you get development? How does development come while still keeping some of that character? You know, we went through, and in staff's mind, rural character is really developments with low density, larger lots and open space, agricultural uses, undeveloped wooded areas, and places where infrastructure is limited. And showing there, those graphics are along the lines of what the next slide, which we went over, shows. It shows a more traditional form of development versus a conservation form of development. We've gone over River's Edge and the two, two plans, so just wanted to show the next couple slides showing comparisons of lot sizes. These are two areas of the county, both up north, that are interesting, because they have a lot of different lot sizes in close proximity. So you have Crown Point, right here, those are three acre lots. You have Quail Point, right next to it, which are 28 to 40,000 square foot lots. And then you have Duck Ridge, Backwoods Reserve, and Saddle Brook, which are 30,000 square foot lots. So this slide gives you an idea of what those lot sizes and densities look like in practice. It's mostly surrounded by vacant lot, and then these lots here just south of Saddle Brook, those are 10 acres, just to give you an idea of what 10 acre lot looks like. This next area is off Puddin Ridge Road. It shows five developments. It shows Jarvis Farms is the largest, that's down here, these few lots, those are three acre lots. Highland Farms, which is just north of that, is 50,000 square foot lots. Quail Run, which is a majority of this slide, are 40,000 square foot lots, and then Moyoc Highlands up here are 35 to 40,000 square foot lots. I will mention that not shown on this is this parcel behind Food Lion, which is the already approved plan. Moyoc Commons, those are 7,000 square foot lots on 28 acres at a density of two dwelling units per acre. So now, just wanted to talk about the proposed text amendment, and what it looks like and what it does. First thing it does is in the AG district, it increases the minimum lot size in conservation subdivisions from 30,000 to 40,000 square feet. The second is in the SFM district, it increases the minimum lot size from 25,000 to 40,000 square feet in a conservation development. And lastly, in the MXR, it increases the minimum lot size for single-family dwellings. Now, you'll note that this one has not increased to 40,000 square feet, it has increased to 25,000 square feet, and this can be up for discussion, but the reason why it's 25,000 is that stays consistent with the density in the MXR, which is two dwelling units per acre. So that, that lot size could be raised to a higher number, but we would also have to look at the density that's permitted in the MXR, and that can be up for discussion. So the intent of the proposed text amendment is to increase the minimum lot sizes. Just wanted to list some additional considerations. There's development types, reduction in number of lots, density, lot width, increase in open space, infrastructure setbacks, buffers particularly around the edge of the development, and mixed use in multifamily. These are other things that can play into density and number of lots, which we'll get into a few of them in a few slides. Which leads me to open space. I wanted to talk about open spaces. I, you know, staff really feels that this is a critical aspect in really defining the density of a development, and how many lots you can get.
Kevin, I got a question. As far as open space, and I know like River's Edge, for example, those lots are roughly, like you said, 30,000 square foot lots.
Or less.
I know, yeah, some maybe a little bit less, and some a little bit more, but I know some of their open spaces, like they're septic, they're not, none of them are on sewer, they're all on septic. Some of their septic's like run, their drain fields and everything run into the, the common areas and stuff like that. A lot of them do. I mean, is that like a normal?
It's not typical. Typically, we have septic on the individual lot it serves. That would involve some sort of easement into the open space. I'm not sure exactly how that is set up.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I want to say it's probably maybe 15 to 20 of them, or their drain fields go to the common area.
Right, typically, septic is all on the same lot it serves, which is, you know, one reason or advantage to having a larger lot. You know, 20,000 square feet's about as small as you can get reasonably and have a septic. And even with 20,000 feet, I mean, that 75% of your backyard is then, you know, a drain field and unusable. So, you know, typically, we say not less than 30,000 square feet is reasonable to have All right, just wanted to show Section 7.1.3, which identifies the 11 features that can be counted towards open space. There's environmentally sensitive lands, beach systems, required landscaping and tree protection, required setbacks, and this isn't on the individual lots, but the agriculture and riparian buffers, farming and forestry land, recreation and park areas, and this is key, and payment in lieu of. So the area that is used to calculate the payment in lieu can be counted towards open space. There's private active recreational areas such as pools, playgrounds, and ballfields, and there's private passive recreation, which is more trails, walkways, benches, or open fields or meadows. There's functionally dependent areas such as docks and boat launches, urban features, plazas, fountains, and lastly, stormwater site amenities, whether that's retention ponds or detention basins. So the same section also lists the uses that are permitted in the open space, which are active recreational uses, passive recreational uses, public facilities such as libraries and community centers, conservation lands, and farming and forestry. So this slide gives you an idea of open space and some things you could consider, such as design and configuration, allowable uses, conservation easements, and required improvements. This shows two developments that use open space very differently. The one on the left is an example of a, you know, somewhat active, somewhat passive open space. It has a gazebo, some trails, and just acts as a visual break in the development. The development on the right, a majority of the open space is stormwater management facilities.
The one on the left is River's Edge. What's the one on the right?
The one on the right is Glenmore and Waterly in that development. And that's, you know, that's what we're seeing a lot, is, you know, that subdivision has, I think, 30 to 35% open space, but a majority is the stormwater management facilities, which is, you know, part, partly a product of rules and regulations getting more stringent. It's more difficult for them to meet those requirements. So I just wanted to briefly talk about some strategies that can control density. The first one, and I'll talk a little bit more about it, is the open space, but we can also look at the way density is calculated, and some of the zoning dimensional requirements that could be changed. So open space, again, these are some pictures of different types of open space. You have a playground, active recreational, a passive walkway, and then, as I mentioned, the stormwater. So, you know, things to consider. You could consider the percentage of open space required, that's the easiest one. You could look at what is included in the uses in open space, what's included in the calculation. And lastly, as I mentioned, with stormwater, there could be a limit to the amount being able to be used for stormwater. The next one, and this is a very interesting slide, is density calculations. So right now, wetlands can be included in, in density. This subdivision here, you'll see the gray portion are wetlands. So I used this subdivision as a study, and saw that's 58 acres. Wetland area takes up 15.5 of those acres. So the density calculation for this, given two dwelling units per acre, because it's in full service, rendered 95 units, and it took into account 48 acres of area. So 98 acres of, or 98 units on 58 acres was a density of 1.68. If the wetlands were not included, it isn't a huge difference, but at that density, it would render 85 units for a density of 1.46. So 13, 13, pardon?
What was the number again, 91?
It, there are 95 units in this development.
Okay.
And that is factoring the almost 16 acres of wetlands into that. If you take the wetlands and remove that from the density calculation, so you're just using the area outside of wetlands, just as an example, it would then render 85 units. So it was 13 units less, once you remove the wetlands from that calculation.
Why was originally all wetlands allowed for the calculation?
Yeah, 404 designated wetlands are allowed, KAMA designated are not part of that.
But when was that? You said we can remove them, I mean, what was it?
Well, it's a possible strategy. Donna, do you know when they were?
It's been a while since I can remember.
Probably forever.
They've always been allowed.
Yeah.
It's back in the seventies.
Yeah, one of the things I asked was, you know, do we, a consideration could be, you take the wet one out, that's open, so you just can't use it. You can't do anything with it, just, it's just, yeah, so go find snakes, I guess, but, but yeah, and it lowers that calculation, as you can see, in this case, 10 or 13 units.
So you said 98, 95.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. And it's, sorry, it was 98 units is what this development has, and it would lower to 85 units if you did not include the wetlands. And this is just an example, it's a subdivision I found interesting for this, this study, so to speak. It is 15,000 square foot lots are what this subdivision is, and it includes 22 acres of open space. This is Moyoc Crossing.
So this, you said these were 15,000 square foot lots?
Yes, 15,000 square foot lots.
Okay, and that was full service?
Full service, and in that area of the county, it was two dwelling units per acre, which the density came out, the current density is 1.68 dwelling units per acre.
That would have been, you said 1.5 or something?
1.46 if you did include the wetlands.
Well, and if you took the same thing and applied a one dwelling unit per acre, which we're talking about for density's sake, you're basically going to cut it in half.
Correct.
Right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, because they are 16 acres, so you would remove that from the 58, you would be talking 52 dwelling units.
That's minus the wetlands?
That's minus the wetlands and factoring in the one dwelling unit per acre. You would have 43 dwelling units if you kept the wetlands in and just factored a density at one dwelling unit per acre. Or no, I'm sorry, 58 units. I'm sorry, I know I just threw a bunch of, bunch of numbers at you, so please.
One acre, you're saying how many dwellers? 52.
At a density of one dwelling unit per acre, it would be 58 units.
With wetlands counted, wow.
With the wetlands counted.
Are the current rules with the way wetlands are calculated?
If you remove.
Without the wetlands, it was 52?
Without the wetlands, it would be 42 acres, or 42 dwelling units.
Okay. So that's reducing quite a bit from 98.
Yes.
I know you can say, "The whole neighborhood."
Okay.
If I can remind everybody to turn on the microphone.
Sorry. Way across. It's right there by Shingle, and it's so wet back there.
Thank you.
The whole thing is very, very wet.
All right.
All right, I'll just move through. The last one is, I said we would look at dimensional requirements. The first is lot size, obviously, this is one you are considering. I just wanted to throw three images of neighborhoods up there, just to give a visual of what this looks like. The one on the left, 8 to 10,000 square foot lots with a density of 2.12. The one in the middle are 20,000 square foot lots with a density of 1.11 dwelling units per acre, and the one on the right is a, sorry, lot size of 40,000 square feet, and that rendered a density of .61 dwelling units per acre. So there's a visual of, you know, the, the range of lots. We don't really have many lots less than 8,000 square feet in the county, so that's about as small as we've approved. Another thing to look at are setbacks. I just wanted to give a visual, currently in all the single-family residential zoning districts, the setback, front setback is 20 feet. You can get a more open feel and get an effect by increasing that. It could be increased, you know, to any, any distance, but for the visual, I increased it to 50 feet, just to show how much more open it can feel. There's more rooms for cars to park in the driveway. You know, we see that in developments quite frequently, where you have a 20-foot setback in a sidewalk. Well, if you have two cars parked in the driveway stacking, it overhangs the sidewalk and into the right of way.
I know, at least in Eagle Creek, and in some of the other subdivisions I've been in, and I don't know what we can and can't do, but, and I'll use Eagle Creek as the example. You have somebody that parks on the street on the left side, and somebody that parks the street on the right side, a bicycle can't fit in between. And so, yeah, you got sidewalks, but even, even with the setback, I think part of the challenge will always be, okay, there's three drivers, three vehicles, somebody doesn't want to be boxed in. In other words, can we push for wider streets in subdivisions?
I, yes, and that was actually all.
That, that'll do two things. One.
Oh, look.
He is right on target.
We think it, you show him.
When did you, when was the five books going to get handed out?
But yes, right of way with, that is recognized as something that can definitely have an impact on how open a development feels. The top one is a 40-foot right of way. You can see in that picture, you know, there's a pickup truck parked, and exactly what you're saying is if a car parked behind that pickup, then where, it's overhanging the sidewalk into the right of way. The middle image is a 50-foot right of way, but it does step the houses back. You can see real faintly on the right side, there's two cars parked there, plenty of room. Then the bottom image is, you know, a much larger right of way than we typically see, but a 70-foot right of way, and that allows for design features such as, you know, grass median in the middle, which functions, you know, not just visually, you know, for an aesthetically pleasing feel, but it also acts as speed control.
Yeah, but those roads on the bottom one aren't wide enough for DOT to snowplow those neither, as in River's Edge. They're not wide enough, the roads are.
Right.
Do they snowpile? It's state road. If it, if it, when we've had major snows, they can't.
They get rate when they get to that priority.
Yeah. Because they tore up the curb and DOT didn't have to fix it. They fell out the hard way.
Well, I think clearly that, that definitely opens up the feel. I, I mean.
And it, well, and a part of that is affected by, if we do, you know, half acre lot, right, a 20,000 square foot lot is a, is a minimum lot size, once, if you step back the house too far.
Oh, and agreed.
Yeah.
Right. The one in the middle, the 50-foot row, I mean, I mean to cut you off, it kind of separates a couple, where's the 50-foot row? I'm trying to visualize the.
Where is that subdivision?
The county.
That is the one just north of here before you turn on Talls Creek. Is it Currituck on the south?
Okay, yeah.
Yep. And that has a larger, want to say a 40 to 50-foot setback. And that has a larger, wanna say a forty to fifty-foot setback from the front.
Yeah, they're stepping back pretty nicely.
There is one other thing you could do, and that's require all driveways to enter from the rear. Have a service route behind the houses, and you're seeing that more and more now. Get them off of the street.
Kevin, can I go back and talk about the dimension requirements too?
Uh, which dimension requirement?
The, the slide that was right before.
Oh, yeah, this one, uh, shows, sorry, lot width. Um, currently, uh, lot width minimum's a hundred and twenty-five feet. If you increase that, what you're doing is you're just providing more room between the houses, uh, which that graphic shows. And, you know, this graphic, uh, increases it to a hundred and fifty feet. Um, but again, that number was just arbitrarily picked to, you know, for the graphic.
So, for the purpose of lot size, um, and I'm gonna use something that's got a sidewalk in the front. Wha- what is considered the lot size? Is, does that include, for example, the sidewalks and the easement beside the road, or what?
If the sidewalk is in an easement on private property, it is included in lot size. So, you're taking.
That could potentially be another aspect of the lot size, either could, could or could not include that.
Correct. So, if it's in the right of way, it doesn't include it, but a lot of the sidewalks we see step back and there's an easement. You know, see that all the time, approving a easement, access easement. And then, um, just one, one thing that I think wraps up the, uh, what I had up on the screen. Uh, we did throw together, Steph, at the workshop for the budget, we handed out a sheet that was the lots approved by major subdivisions since twenty seventeen. And we went back and looked at the minimum lot size and density for those developments, just to give you an idea of what has been approved. I will pass that out.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
So, this shows, I just think this is a, uh, it's important to see over the past several years, uh, you know, the lot sizes that have been coming in for approval, that we are, uh, seeing come through the planning department.
Whatever happened to, uh, Kate Currituck just went away, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, it just, yeah. It's what?
Camera review.
Oh, so it's still, it's still, it came back, oh, okay.
It went away and.
Cam on the core, man, you got, uh, there's, there's ten years.
At least.
Yeah, because they had to build the, um, the canals and all that for.
Entry for the basin was, yep.
But just, oh.
Foxter Station, that's the fifty-five years and older.
Fifty-five and older.
Yes, that is the age restricted development. But yeah, just to, uh, this speaks to the text amendment for forty thousand square feet in that, uh, up in the Moyac Township, uh, ninety-six percent of the lots since twenty seventeen have been smaller that have come through a major subdivision. Now, that doesn't include minor subdivisions, which have a forty thousand square foot lot minimum, uh, or family subdivisions, or, uh, ten acre lots. Those are not included in this, in this figure, this is just.
Is that, is Sandwoods across from the fire station? Okay.
Kevin, on page thirteen of this again, you had mentioned that land behind the food line, there's, there's three parcels.
Yes.
First, what'd you say the acre, what'd you say those lot sizes were, seven thousand, is that what you said?
Yes, the lot sizes.
What was it, that was approved in, what year was it?
Two thousand twelve.
That was approved years ago, it's just now.
Then they, didn't they come before us on the other two lots, and we denied them?
We didn't, we, it didn't get a vote, so, and then they had to wait.
Yeah, I thought we, because it was, it was so wet back in there, I don't think we approved them.
Sewer issues.
Sewer issues, so we, yeah, didn't approve it, so.
That was my very first meeting.
Yeah, so we denied that, I think, back in, okay.
And that's, and the reason why the first section of that is the way it is, and not with homes on it, is because of ways for it.
Yeah, cuz I remember walking that property years ago, and, and as I was walking, my feet were squishing right down the desert, yeah. Okay.
Right.
Where? Oh, in the first phase, in that first, okay.
The first phase has come through, sixteen lots, it is a total of, uh, I think it's mid-fifties.
Fifty-something, I thought.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five lots, fifty-six.
Who really accessed that from, by like, by Secura?
Yes.
Probably Secura.
No, that is the access.
Secura side?
Yeah, that, that road that dead ends at the back of that shopping center, that will be extended.
Because I think they were trying to get in there off, was it B Street or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we, we wouldn't allow that either, cuz it's too much traffic.
It was white pine, yeah.
It was, cuz it's too much traffic for something.
The connector was showed when Coyle Run was developed.
Yeah, it comes, it goes off of back of Coyle Run.
Is that, is that the one that they're trying to figure out exit, is it? Okay, that's the one.
One that floods too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Moyac Commons, it's, it's coming out on, it's stoplight, basically. There's a lot of controversy over the paving, who would take care of the road in and out, cuz it's such bad shape, all that stuff. But, um, let's not get, get down that rabbit hole right this minute, so. Cap, what else you got for us, are you wrapping?
That's what I have, I stand by for any questions, I'll just say, you know, uh, if the goal here is to reduce that density, reduce the, the number of lots, I think increasing the lot size is one tool we have. Um, but there's also, yeah, I tried to dump out a, as much information as I could, just to, you know, show that there are also other, other methods and other ways that we could do, uh, which could be effective, if that is the, the goal of this board.
I think at this point it is, um.
So, we could come up with a laundry list, if you will, of areas that don't count towards the buildable area for density purposes, for example. In other words, right now, you could take streets out, you could take, you know, community center, playground, I, in other words, the wetlands could come out, right?
Correct.
So, all of that would reduce and affect the amount of buildable area.
Correct. Yeah, right now, if we have a large parcel, let's say we have a hundred acre parcel, you know, everything except, and let's just say there's no cam on it, everything in that parcel, you take that gross density, and that's where you determine the number of units. You know, it factors in, so the infrastructure, uh, counts towards that, the streets, sidewalks, uh, wetlands counts for that, open space, all that, uh, counts in. The more you would take away, the less units you would get per acre.
Well, I definitely think we should look at taking wetlands out of the equation, that's ridiculous.
So, so going way back, and Mike, you were probably on the board, cuz Ben Woody did a whole functionality and density comparison, and, and I think, Kevin, you've done a, a good job in presenting. But it was part of the, um, keeping the open field versus, you know, the, in other words, the density remains the same, right? In other words, the total number of units remains the same, yeah, like that.
Good example.
Yeah, I think we did, we did talk about that, it's been a while ago, but we, I think that same comparison almost came up back then too.
Probably did.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Pay attention, it's cool. Um. Okay, so, that's a lot to swallow in, in forty minutes.
Yes, certainly is.
Um.
Ask you this question, what's the number where it doesn't come before, um, us? If it's, if somebody had a small subdivision, they had, is it, minor, is it nineteen?
Twen- twenty lots is a threshold.
Yeah. That's why Fox Club came in and.
Right.
I got you. I was just curious, so if it was something with, like Sunrise View Estates, that didn't come before us. Poplar Branch, cuz it wasn't at the percent, okay.
Right, and in the northern part of the county, um, one driving factor of that eighty-five percent, of course, is, uh, school capacity. That's why you're, you're seeing, uh, every subdivision that comes there in the northern, northern part.
Mm-hmm.
Really, with the exception of Griggs, that's all of the schools, I believe.
Uh, yes, they are all.
So, unless they're.
Knott's Island and Griggs.
All over, Knott's Island and Griggs are, are less, and the others are over eighty-five percent.
Currytop Middle, is Currytop Middle?
Yep.
Yes, it is, there is capacity there, but.
Right. I was gonna say, I know when I went there, it was eight hundred people, and then it's like three sixty, and they're saying it's almost full.
Kids are a lot smaller.
They were smaller, is that what it was?
Except for you.
Except for me, Kevin. Yeah, the band, out with the band, sorry, Mike. Is nap, naps not though? Collectively, it is, okay.
All right, so, uh, I guess where we're at right now is deciding, um, what direction to send the staff in, and, um, and, you know, it, it almost seems like we need to go through each of the zoning districts and kind of pick them apart a little bit, because there's different concerns in ag versus single-family mainland. You know, do we, do we, do we get into, does having more conservation subdivisions, so that you get that open space feel, but increase the lot size, um, in ag, for instance, which is, I believe what you were suggesting, is go up to thirty thousand square foot lots, Kevin, instead of, um.
Uh, the proposed text amendment would, in the conservation, would go up to forty thousand square feet.
Forty from thirty.
Yeah, currently, it's thirty thousand in ag and twenty-five thousand in, uh, the single-family mainland.
But in order to do that, they have to sign a conservation easement in perpetuity, which means they can't develop that open space.
Right, which is. It's the purpose, right? I mean, that's, if you're, if you're trying to get that bottom right feel versus the top left feel, as, as we're looking at this, then that's, you know, exactly what would happen.
On that bottom right feel, I mean, could they put like, I mean, uh, open space, open space, I get that, could they put like? Sorry, open space is open space, but on that bottom right one, could they build like a, not, I mean, obviously not homes, but if they had like a playground or stuff like that, is that something they?
Yeah, it's in the.
They could still put that in there.
It's allowed recreational things that are allowed, that they're going there, and that's, uh, Kevin touched on that initially, um, in here, what's allowed in open space.
Right, that's on slide number twenty. And so, you can have active recreation, ball fields, tennis courts, pools, uh, walking trails, running trails, more of the passive variety. And you can even have structures in there, uh, if they're community centers, libraries, that sort of, uh.
Which is another discussion we should have, um, encouraging that.
I don't wanna throw a monkey wrench in things, but if that house bill passes, it allows no restriction on accessory buildings, then they could go there and load up everything they wanted to. And that takes away, again, another erosion of county authority, um, being able to control our own density and development.
Kevin, um, we, the county recently did away with, I know at one time, we were having to include septic systems, a repair field portion, but that's gone now, is it not? I don't think, Currituck was the only one that was still doing that. Okay, I, I thought Currituck was the only one that was using that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because then that's gonna have an effect to them, which, you know, of, of your, what you can do on your land then. Because I think right now, if you have a septic, you gotta allow a certain portion of that for repair.
Yes.
It's a repairing area.
Yes, which takes up some of your land in there.
Which we had, we changed, didn't we, we had that?
We had, we had, what we had was like, uh, down in, in, um, your neighborhood, we were talking about that with the, uh, um, some of the lots had to have access to that repairing area up front, cuz they were trying to put the playground and pool, and expand that into the front of the neighborhood, and, um, it was one of the few that actually had that, I believe, and we, I think we took that out. We got rid of that for going forward.
That was in your, yeah, your neighborhood there, the camera bound.
Yeah.
So, Kevin, I'm just trying to put my head around all this information that, that's been given. If we do the, uh, forty thousand square foot lots, and we keep the, uh, open space calculations, um, the one on the right in that, uh, slide, they, it would still have the same open space concept, but the lots themselves would be bigger, correct?
Correct, and by current standards, um, this neighborhood has fifty-four percent open space. I do not believe that a conservation subdivision now, uh, does not require that much open space.
That's the biggest one on the mainland.
Right, and this wasn't, and Donna can correct me if I'm wrong, but this wasn't developed as what we now know as a conservation subdivision, it was more of an open space program.
Right, just has the look and feel.
Right, it's, it was just a good example, because we had a plan of the same development, so same acreage, basically same number of houses, uh, just two diff- very different ways to approach it.
And that's why I'm saying, we need, uh, it's a discussion between ag and single-family mainland, so, you know, there's a one acre density, and then, but there's a lot size necessarily that need to be an acre. Or not, right? So, you can do one acre density, one dwelling unit per acre, or, well, in this case, in ag, it's, it's three per acre. In ag, you take it up to the forty thousand square feet, and, and it creates a much more open product, right? But in the single-family mainland, when we get into other areas, um, your density is basically one to one. Now, do you want to see a half acre lot, maybe in a, in a regular neighborhood, as opposed to a one acre lot? Your density controls that and taking away some of the tools. So, if you require them to be conservation neighborhoods, for instance, in single-family mainland, and, um, full service, you can, you can pull, you can claw back some of it, have smaller lots that are more manageable for people, but still not allow this giant number of homes to go in there, because you ta- if you take out the wetlands, if you take out roads and things that they count as.
Less homes.
Right, you're still in it with less homes, just smaller lots, right? And that's not necessarily a bad thing, not everybody wants an acre, there's probably some argument that if you don't like it, then, you know, you don't have to move here.
And I think the whole concept of the, the one acre was to come up, but that was one solution to reduce.
Then.
Density, but.
The number of dwelling units.
Yes, but there's other avenues too, that can.
Well, just like.
Same thing versus always making everything.
You get the same goal and not necessarily have to have a one acre lot.
For everything.
You can have a twenty thousand square foot lot or three thousand.
Using that, using that as an example, like, the bottom right is what it is, not the top left. But like, there's walking paths, there's boat ramp, I mean, there's so much more amenities with the seventy-eight acres of open space compared to fifteen. One of the other things that, and I was part of a discussion, I can't remember if you and I had it, but it had to do with, you know, we do the payment in lieu of, and, and I think, one of the things that I appreciated about and where the Moyac Park exists today, that was land that was given to the county, basically, you know, by subdivisions that went in. There's also, I think, there could be potentially a huge, and I don't know what the feel is from developers along those lines, but actually putting recreational facilities, parks, within the subdivision as well. And I, have you, do you have any feeling for openness to do that? I, I mean, there's aspects of, you know, if it's, what's that?
Make that a condition of, yeah, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, when you look, and I'm gonna use university apartments, for example, and, you know, the benefit of that is, you know, amenities, when they're within the park, do a couple of things to enhance, or, I'm sorry, amenities that are within the subdivision. They do a bunch of things that are, are positive for what we're after, not the least of which is, you know, they create nice places for people to live. nice places for people to live. It's, you know, especially in areas that are not as close to playgrounds that that we have, that encourages, you know, staying within that neighborhood. Do you have any feel for what kind of popularity that might have or receptiveness that we have?
I can tell you this from just
What's, like Kevin?
Oh, I was gonna say, I mean, I go there all the time, I was gonna say, you know, far as, have you ever, I mean, the swimming pools and stuff like that at the university, there's forty people there, I mean, it's it's busy, it does keep them on site, like you said.
Right, well, that was, that was my point, and it was you and I in that discussion, so.
Yeah, I think there's, I think you hit it right on the head, there's a tremendous value when those are in in neighborhoods now, I don't know in terms of the appetite from the development community, of course, I can't speak for them, I will say, you know, just about every development we have come in takes the payment in lieu of option.
Well, there's no, there's no, and and you and I've had this conversation, and I I was talking with one of our developers, and, you know, he said, the reason they pay the fee in lieu of is because they don't get credit for doing anything, so if they put a playground in and they spend a hundred thousand dollars, for instance, and their payment in lieu of would have been a hundred fifty, they, you know, they could put a playground in for a hundred and then give fifty to the county, and, you know, the county still receives some money. And and part of the thought process, or the way it's set up, there's no, there's no, there's no consideration for that for the developer, and the county, the way it is now, would like to see that park open to the public, or those amenities open to the public, but they're not, they're they're in a neighborhood, and they should be part of the neighborhood, they should not be open to the public at large, in general, right, because you've got liability, you've got whatever.
Well, look at just maintenance, I mean, HOA, I'm gonna use an HOA, HOA dues go in part to take care of that facility.
Right.
I think they have every right and expectation that, you know, if we put in a feature that our community really likes, you know, maybe the county could take notice and look at putting it in one of the public parks, but I, I don't think it's, I I agree, I.
So that was part of the discussion that I had with you and, I believe, several.
I talked to you about that, well, like, what about like the Moyoc Park, which is twenty acres, which the county owns, I mean, you pull up there on any, I mean, the parking lot's always full. I went there the other day, over the weekend, it was busy.
Well, so that that's another discussion outside of this, and that is just changing how we look at recreational areas and our open spaces, and when it comes to developers, right, and then deciding Chesapeake has that exact formula, if a developer puts them in, then they can deduct the expense from their fee in lieu of. So it encourages, in some regards, and the developer
Max the fee.
Yeah, he, well, and it makes it more attractive for them. Oh, we have a playground, we have a dog park, we have this, right, and so you, you up your price a little bit to cover those costs, and, you know, and people want them, and it's in our, in our situation, it's even more important because of the number of cars on the road and people and the, you know, traffic, if we can keep them in a neighborhood as opposed to traveling around as much, that's a good thing. But that's a, that's another discussion item, we're kind of running out of time on this one, because we've got to do mainland calendar. So I guess the the homework now is for the board to take this home. She wanted a little bit, and have us come back again, and make sure what direction we want to go in, thoughts, whatever, so that they have a clear direction when they're crafting language for us going forward.
Is there anything staff can be working on right now while we're fine tuning our thoughts, or?
I don't know.
Do you need more input from us?
Well, what staff really needs is a direction outside of, right now, we have a text amendment to increase to forty thousand square feet. That is in the process, that can, of course, stay through the process. I think we had additional work session about the timing of text amendments right now.
Right.
It looks like that one could come in front of you in June.
Right, the one that's
That that text amendment, the one acre text amendment can come in June.
Worst case scenario, that one still comes forward while we tweak this, at least that gets something on the books and in place.
Right.
Having some impact in reducing
Right.
Density.
So I guess the question is, right now, what they're working on coming through, is there anything that you would like them to include, like taking wetlands out, Mike?
I think, I think the wellens out.
So that, that's one thing right there.
I think everybody agrees on that.
Yeah, that's a big reduction in the number of lots that can be developed.
Can I ask Kevin one quick question, page nine, where you said it was in the red, I wrote some notes, the red is
Current.
Current.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that chart is all our current requirements.
Alright, thank you.
The text amendment that you said is coming before us from somebody else has submitted, did that not have taken the wetlands out?
Uh, I do not believe that text amendment did. They are, as you said, there is a text amendment that has been submitted, not from the commissioners, that's running a parallel track. You know, Donna is the staff handling that one, she could probably speak more towards it. One difference, I will say, is that that text amendment works to change lots to an actual acre, which is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, rather than, you know, what I've, what I've heard to refer to as the Currytuck acre, which is forty thousand.
Right.
But I, you see that frequently.
A rounding down a little bit.
Yeah, that was just my point, is there any consensus that this board has?
I think that's
Like the wetlands is one of them, and if there was something.
Uh, setback, street setback.
I like the fifty foot setback.
I like the middle one, like Currytuck on the sound, how that is, it's
And I'd like a bigger right away.
And the right away may be fifty, fifty feet, too.
What is it, forty?
Forty.
Forty now.
Yeah, fifty, because you're smacking mirrors on to pickup trucks.
Fifty and fifty.
Fifty and fifty.
And that takes care of a lot of stuff ahead of time, as we work to tweak it, that part's already done.
And I'm sure that our engineers will have some thoughts on that, we'll get an email from, oh, look, there's one in the audience that we'll hear from. Okay, any, any, any other thing we can tweak easily that comes to mind right this minute?
And of course, please reach out as you digest this, you know, if there's any supplemental information you'd like to see, you know, we're happy to gather that for you.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Do you need a break for anybody before we jump into the calendar? Very good, all right. Thank you, Kevin, and everybody on you that's put effort into this, I appreciate it.
Alright.
What do you mean? Well, the planning timelines, I'm sorry, Kevin, you, did you, so, we passed this around.
Yeah, the planning timelines, I can go through that very, very quickly.
Can't read that.
Leanne is passing out this presentation, so of course you can digest it more, but yeah.
Wow, yeah, that looks like schools.
That that was actually, the introduction is, yes, here is what staff uses to establish timeline, it's a lot of information, you can't read it, so here's a summary of it on the next next slide, well, you will have it in front of you, but this just goes through real briefly, goes through the timing of things. You know, when, when things are submitted, how long it takes to go to TRC. This is probably a better graphic to show, so the top graphic shows our current, if a application were submitted for the June TRC, this top graphic, it would go to TRC, June fourteenth. Comments back to the applicant the following day. The revision date is the twenty second, if it goes to a second TRC, it would be July twelfth to then get placed on the August eighth planning board and heard by the Board of Commissioners on September fifth. I have these figures later in the presentation, but that is approximately a hundred days through the process.
This is for
A text amendment.
Text amendment.
So the current schedule, and what the current schedule has, when, you know, we dug into it, it has built in a second TRC review. Well, text amendments, most of them do not require a second TRC. So what this bottom graphic shows is if you remove that second TRC from the base timeline, and if it has to go to a second one, it has to go. But if you remove that, then you can save a month of time, where, right now, a text amendment on the June TRC would go to the Board of Commissioners, September fifth, it would be August seventh by this simple change, which is what, which is what staff proposes now. You see, it's very difficult to see, but you can probably see it on your printout, here is like grayed out, July seventeenth. Well, right now, the way the schedule is set up is you have your planning board, and the Board of Commissioners meeting directly following the planning board has the special use permit preliminary plat. The reason is that those do not require planning board review, so there's no dual advertising or anything like that involved. If you did move the text amendments to that first one, you could save additional time, another twenty days or so. But right now, it's set up where the text amendment and the rezonings, because they have that planning board built in, they go to the second meeting following it.
Okay, so there's no requirement to schedule them that way, right?
No, we can schedule them.
We did them for us, at least for a strong season because of labor, trying to, you know, level load labor, et cetera, et cetera. But you know, that seems to have abated somewhat to the point where, I mean, this is the second, at least the second, if not the third meeting in a row now, where it's just been pretty light.
Right.
And in, you know, in consideration for applicants, why wait another two weeks, why wait another month, when
Right.
I mean, clearly workload is workload, and that well, I know, but I don't want to artificially hold something back, just because
Right.
At one time, we thought that was important.
And I will tell you to play the other side, that to get it that quickly, that one week turnaround, there is advertising, where you would be advertising it before the planning board, so the, if, let's say, the planning board went and significantly changed the text amendment or something, we would have to advertise it again. So there's that dual advertising cost, that's one of the things considered in that, as well as
That run.
Ooh.
Got to advertise in the paper, right?
Okay. At a cost of
Right.
Possibly, possibly not. But when we box ourselves into something, you know, because the way the calendar breaks, right, I, all, all I'm saying is, I get the advertising requirements and all of that, but when we rigidly say we're gonna wait sometimes a month to hear something that may have been a minor whatever, and were two weeks, right, that I, I don't know that the cookie cutter works anymore.
Don't we, I mean, we we postpone or reschedule some items before the board anyway, so if if something like that happened, and it was a major change from the planning board, I guess we could just, then, at that point, remove it from that meeting and
I mean, we've had the planning board not have a quorum.
Yeah, I know.
I just, I would like us to see more, you know,
Proactive.
Customer focused, right, somebody trying to get something before the Board of Commissioners. You know, if somebody that wants to open a business or something like that, and I don't want to install artificial constraints in getting that done just because.
Man, do you know what the cost to advertise this stuff?
Depending on the newspaper and the height of the length, anywhere from a hundred and fifty dollars, I don't think there's anything under a hundred and fifty. I've advertised things that are fifty, nine hundred dollars. So it just depends, I doubt that that would be that costly, but probably a couple hundred dollars.
Doing Elizabeth City or something, we're not doing Virginia Pilot, for instance.
No, they're So we try to do either the coastline, I try to use the Coastline Times if it's something on the beach, because
Right.
They're more likely to read that. And if it's on the mainland, I try to use the D L ones.
Okay.
So just by this one change, and not factoring in Commissioner, what you're talking about is more of a practical approach, is get it, when it goes through, get it on the soon, quickest agenda we can, which I think is
Based upon caseload, right?
Caseload and and requirements.
Exactly.
Right, just making that one shift of not having that built in second TRC, though, that takes the average application down about a month. Right now, for instance, the average special use permit is eighty-seven and a half days, and this would take it down to fifty-six.
And you, we used to, did we not have one or two TRCs in a month versus one? Is that, we've always only been one? Okay.
So you you're proposing immediately going to the lower one?
Correct, yes, I think that is
Good with that.
That is perfectly reasonable for staff, and if we can save a month, you know, by all means, we would want to save the applicant.
I would say, go with that one, and then we can always tweak it or do something more as we work with it and see if there's a way we can speed it up, but that helps right there.
I agree. Okay.
All right, that's what I had for you on that.
All right, that was an easy one. Sort of. All right.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Was it some middle timeline that changed, Donna? Did it, it used to be you could submit closer to TRC than you do, now you submit further out, is that, is that what changed? Okay. Uh, okay, yeah, I I was struggling with what it was, it was the difference, okay, thank you. All right.